Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting to order and we start with plea of allegiance to these. Good evening, if we could start the meeting with the consent agenda. Item 1.0, I think, in plain of motion. This person, so I'll have motion on the consent agenda for like second, Mr. Kent. For second. Is there any discussion on the consent agenda? Same number, gonna call it to a vote by a show of hands, all in favor. And consent agenda is moved on. Item 2.0 is a secretary's report. Item 2.1, opportunity for Board of Education to add or delete agenda items is either applicable to add or delete an agenda item this year. Same number, move on. Item 2.0, Rockville High School Student Representative Report. Good evening.
Good evening. So, obviously, I actually have really good stuff to report now since schools actually started. It started off pretty successfully, I would say, especially with the assembly on the first day where each grade got to meet and be principal. It really started off on the right note and with the moral set straight and so there are no more, there's no more mean way. Yeah, that's very good. Also, Friday is our first real football game and the marching band will also be performing during halftime, which is our first performance of the season. We are all really excited for this year's football game. I know we have a couple new coaches, so many players, and we're hoping for a really good season. Also, the pregame apparently is going to be huge. There's gonna be bouncy houses and a bunch of stuff for, to track families and to make it a real completely event. Also, just another thing that I'd like to bring to your attention. In the Aqua Lab in the Ad Department, we have sharks and a couple more exotic fish, and we've had them for over six years, but now they're starting to outgrow their tank. And their current tank is actually old molasses fat, that's 2,000 gallons, and they're looking to upgrade it to something between 5,000 and 10,000 gallons. So if any of you know any like juice company that has like a giant 5,000 gallon tub laying around, you know, they're really trying to reach out to outline communities. Otherwise, if they do not find a tank adequate for these sharks and other fish, they will have to donate them. And they really, really love these sharks. They've had them since they were born, and it's a really great opportunity for those kids in Ad to really experience firsthand such great creatures. So also, something I figured I would start this year is, since all of you can't formally come to the high school and kind of get the experience that a student would get through the years and years of being there, I would just like to bring up a thing or two each meeting that you would only get a sense of as a student, that makes me proud to be an RHS student. The first thing that I'd really like to bring attention is something I've always been really proud of, is the Gay Straight Alliance Program at our school. While our school does have its quirks, I have never seen or heard of anyone being bullied for their sexuality, which I know is a huge ordeal in some other schools across the country. So in that aspect, Rockville High School students have always been really accepted, and that makes them really happy because you see people grow more comfortable with who they are throughout these high school years. Also, my last aspect, the photo program in our school. Our photo program, I've been in it for three years now, and I adore it. It brings together a wide range of people who you normally wouldn't have classes with or get to know, and that's really a great opportunity to make new friends and see different perspectives. Also, it's good for kids who need that art credit, who aren't good at play or drawing or musical instrument, so it's a really great outlet. Also, we use manual canons, so we learn the whole darkroom process, all the chemicals, and it's really fantastic. It really helps each student understand all of the photography, like the history and all the whole process. It's incredible. If you ever have had the experience, I'm sure you know what I'm talking about. Also, one of our students was actually, a couple years ago, the AP Benchmark. They submitted their work and their quality pieces, which they sent him to the College Board, was actually said, they put it online and said, "This is what a five looks like. This is a perfect score." And so our program is producing great things. I know this year there was 15 students in the AP 2D Design Aspect for photography alone, nevertheless drawing and painting. So I really wanted to bring that to your attention to let you kind of get more insight into how our school works. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that report. Board members, anybody have any questions for our student rep this evening? Same number, thank you, move on. Item 3.0, Community Forum. This is the opportunity for comments on the agenda items, potential future agenda items, or general information provided to the Board from citizens and community organizations. Is there anyone who wishes to speak to the Board this evening? Quiet, thank you. Move on. Item 4.0, Curriculum. Item 4.1, Board of Education Curriculum Committee Report. Dr. Conway.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Goel. I'm gonna turn this right over to Mr. Burt, who just finished the meeting moments ago with the curriculum committee, and we have some exciting things going on.
All right, good evening. My primary purpose tonight is to give you a quick overview of a larger presentation that we'll be giving two weeks from now.
The microphone.
Does that matter?
Yes.
It's my first time. So again, I'll start over, is that my purpose tonight is to give you a brief overview of a longer presentation that Mr. Testa and I will be giving you on a new Algebra I curriculum that was generated by the state, is their model curriculum. In your packet, you received a PowerPoint overview of the curriculum from the state, and in your blue packets tonight, you received login information on how to actually get in and take a look at some of the material that is available for teachers and for students for this course. What is available at the website is overview of the course, overview of units, expectations for units, lesson plans, activities, and exit slips for individual units. And what is not available, this is a guest site, is the secure test items. That is a login specific that Mr. Testa has and not available to the general public. What I'd like for everyone to do is to take a look at this material over the next couple of weeks, and if you have any questions, forward them to Dr. Conway, and we'll do our best to answer them. Mr. Testa and I have met and tried to anticipate some of your questions, but we're gonna do our best to answer them through our presentation and obviously be available for your further questions as well. I believe Mr. Testa will be bringing a couple of teachers with you for the presentation as well. To give you a little background for this, we were in the middle of looking into different textbooks to be purchased this year to support Algebra I curriculum. As you may know, Algebra I is taught in both eighth grade and ninth grade, and we were looking to purchase a new textbook. And through that process, I asked Mr. Testa to find a couple of different textbooks to pilot, as well as an online textbook to pilot, because we know that things change rapidly and textbooks do not, as well as we can lose textbooks, and it's very difficult to lose the internet. So what, through that process, Mr. Testa came to me around August 1st and said that the state was coming out with a model curriculum that was viable after years and years of research, and he would like to go to workshop for that, and he took two teachers with him, and they both came back very excited. So through that process, what we'd like to do is bring some of these ideas forward to you and then answer any questions that you may have. I'll have more specific proposals two weeks from now, but what we're looking to do is adopt this curriculum, which could also be used as a textbook.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 5.0, General Business. Item 5.1, Summer School Report. Dr. Conway, and I know we have some presenters.
Thank, yes, we do. The presenters would come forwards to the table. We can have everybody up at once, that would be terrific. We do have a report from a high school summer program, the middle school summer program, the elementary summer academy, plus the enrichment academy. We ran two academies together, and then our extended program in the summer for students with speech needs. And so we'll take them in the order that they appear in your packet, so Mr. Rocket will be up first if he doesn't mind. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Conway. Mr. Cameron Lynch, gentlemen of the Board. So Sue Andrews, as you know, runs the summer school program for us, and she said while she just loved her evenings out and her, and looked forward to her night with the board, that she felt she'd pass on this, so we'll give her a sit back in the classroom. As usual, she ran an outstanding program. The facts and figures speak for themselves. It's a pretty simple report, straightforward format, I think you've seen before. I'll point out a couple of things. One, you know, it's a self-sustaining program. The focus is on credit recovery, that there is targeted eligibility for the course, namely you have to achieve a certain percentage of achievement to be eligible for. And I'll note a couple of things that drew my attention. Thank you. One is the high level of success of the participants of the program. If you got there before class started, while it might not seem like they were peppy and interested at eight o'clock on a beautiful July morning, but they all actually, once the day started, they paid attention and dove right in and did quite well. And so we were very, very pleased with the level of success. One of the good things about summer schools is if the kids are motivated enough to get there and take it on, they usually do pretty well. I noted the numbers of people from out of town using our program, that helps, of course, the self-sustaining aspect of it, and the, I guess, the bottoming out of the number of Rockville High. I will tell you that we've already begun what we call hallway discussions at the high school about potentially changing the structure of it. For us, the concept of the Carnegie Unit is still a valuable factor, you know, so many hours of seat time for a course, but we also believe it's a limiting factor, that learning is expanding well beyond just the actual time you have in school. So again, very preliminary discussions are about ways we can expand that specifically through the use of technology. So again, the report speaks for itself, really nothing dramatic. Any questions?
Board members, any questions on the Rockville High School Report for Mr. Rocket? Same number. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Harrison?
I'm Jim Harrison, Principal of Middle School. Middle School Summer School Program. After being away from there three years, I came back and was in charge of it. Couple of things with our middle school summer school program, we offered language arts, math, and science this year. In order to be targeted for summer school, you will have to pass that all classes, you're allowed to fail one class. I should say, anyone who fails more than one class is required to go to summer school. So this year, we had 36 students who did not meet what would be considered promotional criteria, they failed more than one class. Those were eight sixth grade students, 10 seventh grade students, and 18 eighth grade students, a total of 36. We had 26 of those students attend summer school with a class enrollment of 49. All 26 who went to the summer school program successfully completed all aspects of the program. The good thing about the summer school program, we had kids there who worked in unison with the alternate route to certification program, so we have student teachers who come and work with all teachers there. Class ratio, student to teacher ratio is excellent. So as far as the month of July and spending the time in summer school, while it is at times, it is a punitive program, it is certainly a time where they can have practice and repetition and work with teachers in the small group setting. I also am very careful about hiring certain teachers to work for my summer school program, so we hire teachers who work year-round in our building. We know the students, we know the curriculum, they know about our building. We also have a guidance counselor, who is one of our guidance counselors, who works throughout the summer and provides counseling, and just a chance to touch base with those students, talk about successes over the year, talk about failures over the year, but that's also a part of the summer school program. We have parent professionals who work during the year who are also involved with classrooms in case there are other students who may need to be pulled out or may need some special attention even during the class. So student teacher ratio is excellent, the opportunity to practice, excellent. We do have some kids, and there are some kids that of the eight sixth graders who did not meet promotional criteria, all but two attended the seventh grade, all but four, and of the 18, all but four went. We did retain three students, two from seventh grade and one from eighth grade. Part of the other discussion that we always take, that always takes place when we do as teaching staff and also as administrative staff and related service staff is, for the students who do not complete the summer school program, who did not go to required classes, we have discussions as far as whether the recommendation is that they are transferred or if they're retained. And clearly, if people successfully complete the summer school program, then they're promoted to the next class. But there are some kids and situations, much like the high school law program is self-funded, there are some issues sometimes where their parents can pay for summer school or whether they have no intention of sending their kids to summer school. So there's some pretty lively conversation about what to do with certain students and whether they should be successfully moved on, whether they should be retained. We did retain three students this year, but again, the 26 who had to go to summer school or who went to summer school successfully completed.
Thank you. Questions, Board members? Mr. Bootark?
Thank you.
Please use your microphone.
Mr. Harrison, can you enumerate the reasons why do the students have to go to summer school?
If, again, if they fail more than one subject, they have to go. If they did not meet promotional criteria, so if they failed two subjects, they do not meet promotional criteria, they would be required to go to summer school. If not at VCMAS, there are some parents who do attempt to have tutoring or something that might certainly suffice for a summer school program and force some practice and repetition, but they have to have failed more than one subject. If that's the case, again, they don't have to go to summer school to pass one of those subjects. Many times, we recommend that they take an additional class as well. So it's one or more. Thank you.
Mrs. Fisher?
I just have a question about the eighth graders. You said 18 had failed two classes, and only four went to summer school?
No, no, I'm sorry, all but four.
Oh, all but four, okay. All right, and then one was retained and the other three were...
Correct. And again, part of that, anytime, middle school, as I'm sure we all know, I mean, middle school is, there are a lot of things that are going on. We take into consideration a lot of things that may have happened with a child that year. We have kids who suffer some significant loss that might impact their academics. We have kids who have been hospitalized. We have kids who've gone through some traumatic events. We start discussing these kids that we may flag, I mean, sometimes as early as October or November. We try to get creative with everything from scheduling, we try to do, you know, conferences, obviously, but there are a lot, there's a lot of things that get involved with truly looking at whether this student, what's the benefit if they're transferred or retained. We're very cognizant of also the success rate as our, of our eighth graders going into the high school. We don't want to send kids to the high school who aren't prepared, but the flip side of that is, we also try to take into consideration past success, how they've done on CMTs, what their history is, whether this is just a blip, whether, you know, so it's more or less you're looking at what their capabilities would be, and was this just a difficult year? And sometimes, that is the case, and those decisions have to be made. They're not made in isolation. We need the team of teachers, parent, related services, the administration, and then after summer school is completed, we come back and we discuss every kid who was recommended, whether they went, where they went, if it wasn't to our summer school, and then what our final recommendation would be.
Ms. Sun?
To Mr. Harrison and probably Mr. Rocket. My questions are from my own understanding, not a judgment about the program. Is there a minimum grade that a student must achieve in order to qualify for summer school? Or can a student who has, for lack of better terms, failed miserably, still take a summer school course for credit?
From my end, I will tell you, I think someone could fail miserably if someone is failing five classes, which might be the case for a couple of kids who may have retained. We question that. If it's just one class, then we, again, we take a look at teacher, subject, history, everything else, and we then make a decision as to whether those 18 or 20 days warrants passing onto the year. And we're very well aware of, it's a quandary of, do 18 days make up for a year of learning? And I understand that clearly, but, you know, please understand where I'm coming from too. Even though these students might have failed, they've had successes maybe in different parts of the year. When push comes to shove, at the end of the year, they might not have met the passing rate. Some might be failing miserably, some are margin. And so it's a matter of, again, individually looking at every student, their situation, the pros and cons of going to summer school, the pros and cons of promoting or transferring as opposed to retaining. I mean, I have to tell you, you know, we've retained in the past, we've transferred in the past. I don't think this, you know, any real proof that shows retention is certainly successful. But I would also tell you that it's hard, again, for us to justify if a kid fails four or five, passing them on to the high school, because we're concerned about how they would do there. So I don't know if that answered your question, but they can fail miserably and still be able to go to summer school. The other, the other good thing about it is when we have some of our teachers, our own teachers at VCMAS who are teaching summer school, it's our hope that there's a connection there for teachers they may have starting this year that they've had in summer school, guidance counselors they may have next year working with them during summer school. So there are some true benefits, whether it's only for 18 or 20 days, as opposed, as opposed to just not having, you have to make up any of the work at all, so.
So you, so it's your opinion, or proof is, that 18 days in a classroom for a couple of hours a day can actually provide a student the knowledge that they need to move forward?
Again, I think you have to look at whether the students have that knowledge or background, and for whatever reason, something happened this year where they did not achieve the way they normally would. So I don't want to say that those 18 days make up for the whole year. What I'm saying is that there's, there's an opportunity there. For whatever reason, if a student, a student didn't do what they normally would do or needed to do, that I think it's still an opportunity to have them come into the building, to work with teachers, practice, repetition, build some skills, meet with adults who want to see them succeed, and hopefully that proves to be successful in itself.
So we're doing the students a favor, not a favor, no. It's appropriate for the students then to get this support in order to move on, to be ready for the next grade level?
I would say yes. I think the best word is, for me, I think, I think we are doing a service, because it's better than what they may, may or may not receive. And again, it's an opportunity to work on some of the things that we may not have. I will tell you that the attendance is outstanding for the summer. I will tell you, we don't have kids who missed many of the days, and many of them have missed during the whole year, so that has contributed to what, why they failed. So I think overall, if you ask me, is it worth it for those students? Yes, because it would just be as easy for them to blow off those days and not come in and do the work. So I think, I think it is beneficial for them.
And you make, you make judgments based on what you know about the student and their history, about whether this will work for them, whether the summer program does, does give them what they need. It's not just an easy way to a credit, it gives them what they need.
No, and again, the tough, the tough thing at the middle school is they're not really getting credit when they're going to the high school after you...
It puts them in a place where they can be promoted.
Correct, so absolutely. It allows us to at least have that conversation in August about whether they came to summer school, did what they were expected to do, participated in all aspects of the program, so then that's part of the decision we make right then and there. Did they show anything at this point for us to feel better? And at sixth graders, again, some of those other kids as well, if you retain a student in sixth grade and they don't do as well in seventh or eighth grade, I mean, you, you really have at times one shot to make sure you're working with these kids, and you want to see whether it's a matter of maturity, you want to see how they respond to different things, and I think the key is also making them feel good about coming into the building. If you can accomplish that in the summer, so they feel better heading into the fall, I think you take that shot.
Mr. Rocket, you would agree with that about credit retrieval?
Yes, ma'am, several things. At the high school, as I mentioned, about targeted eligibility, last year to be eligible and previous years, it was 60 to 69 percent you had to earn to be eligible. I don't know that next year that would be the same. For example, I would say, can we say with certainty that a person who got 1% less on their achievement sets is any less knowledgeable than the person who got a 60? So there's an equity problem there. Also, in high schools, I've seen just any number of reasons, very understandable, human reasons, why people did not achieve higher percentages, family incidents, social things they're going through, many things that while they were present many times and learned and acquired knowledge, nevertheless, they could not very formally put that form in the form of a project, et cetera. So I think we have to radically expand access to summer school beyond that. I understand the concept, the concept is to make sure it's not a watered-down rubber stamp that we're just passing the kids through. So the concept is valid, but nevertheless, I think we have to expand opportunity for it. Its primary use, according to our structure, still is in a credit recovery mode, and I will tell you one sort of human interest story which validates the program. A young lady came up to me today and said, "Mr. Rocket, I want to know if I'm eligible for senior privilege," because we watch that very carefully now, where they can have late arrival or early dismissal if they passed all their courses for the previous quarter. She failed a course at the end of the year last year, she took a summer school, she recovered credit, and now she wanted senior privilege. And we said yes, and it's one of those little social validations that, you know, that encourage kids towards academics. So there's many reasons beyond just that they get the credit that we think is a successful program.
Thank you.
Mr. Bootark?
Thank you. If I may add also...
Please use your mic.
Use your mic.
Thank you. If I may add to your answer, it also depends upon how good an examiner is the student. Some people are good examiners, some are not so good examiners, so that also adds on to what you just described. Thank you.
Yes, sir, I'm with you 100% on that. As you all know as well as I do, some people are great test takers on paper and pen test. Some people can talk better than others and might have an opportunity to give their knowledge better that way. Some can build better, and our structure generally tilts towards just the formulaic test taking. So, you know, that's a factor, I think, but I think the 60 as a minimum. I think we have to expand opportunity to summer school.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions? Thank you, I think we're on to the other.
Very good, thank you. And Mr. DeVallis ran our elementary academy this summer. Mr. DeVallis?
Good evening. Yeah, I'm Mr. DeVallis. I'm the assistant principal at Center Road School and also the director or coordinator of the summer school program. This was my first year running the summer school program, so I didn't really know what to expect. But, you know, the kids came ready to learn, the staff was great, and I really had a nice experience. The student behavior was excellent, and I really felt that, you know, learning was maximized in the, overall, the short amount of time we had. We had four weeks for the programs, and we met 16 days. We did have, looking at pre-K through 5, we had 156 students enroll in the summer school program, which was nice to see, I think it was an increase from last year. And some of the neat things that the grade level did this year, the second and third grade classes, just due to size and the ability to do that, they actually switched classes. So one of the teachers taught math, and the other one did language arts, and then they actually switched students. So there was a lot of collaboration between the teachers, which was great to see, and for the younger grades, kindergarten and first grade, there was a full-time paraprofessional in the classroom each, for each class. So looking at student to adult ratio, it was excellent. It was never more than 12 to 1, and in most cases, it was usually 6 to 1 or better. Moving on, also, this was the first year that we did the enrichment program, and although the enrollment wasn't as high as I wished, we were able to have an enrichment program three out of the four weeks. And we had a total of 21 students partake in the enrichment programs. Two of them actually were in summer school, and it gave us a nice option, because one of the students in first grade, actually, she was, she was in summer school, you know, parent choice. She wasn't IEP, which IEP students took up about 50% of the students attending elementary summer school, and then for the most part, the other students were recommended by teachers because they were below grade level in reading, and that's why they were recommended for summer programs. But parents also had the option to sign them up. And we had one first grade student who was, you know, well beyond grade level, so we actually put her in an enrichment class for one of the weeks, which was excellent for her. She had to do some readers theater, they made poker, made their own props, they presented at the end, so it was a great experience for her and something more to her level. We also did a Spanish enrichment, which was neat to see. I loved just going into those classrooms, because, you know, those students in the enrichment program, they wanted to be there, they were excited to learn, and the attendance for the enrichment program was phenomenal, it was 100%, no one ever missed a day. And, you know, the feedback from parents that we got was outstanding, you know, just the kids coming home, just wanting to tell them what they learned that day, as opposed to sometimes, you know, struggling to get information maybe during the school year about what happened in school. about what happened in school that day. So the enrichment program is definitely something that I want to look into, trying to expand, trying to advertise a little bit better. I do want to get out flyers to all the families in Vernon that attend that in schools, and try to get families coming back for our summer enrichment program. Just last year, it was, by the time everything rolled out, it was too late in the year, and I didn't want to seem, I didn't want to send them out in June, like, oh, by the way, you know. But this year, I'll, I'll have an earlier attack on it, and we'll get, we'll spread the word a lot earlier to really hope to expand that piece of the summer academy. Another great thing, last thing I'll talk about, is that, you know, there was a computer lab in Middle Street School that I think every grade, even some of the, you know, the preschool programs got into that to use the computer lab at least once a week. It helped, it was also air-conditioned, and we had some hot days, so that was one of the pluses. But just to see, you know, the kid really using the technology on a weekly basis was excellent. So, you know, overall, I was pleased with the first year, and I'm excited to continue to make it grow. Questions?
You do have a one-page summary of the discovery program in your blue folders, if you hadn't taken that out. Sorry, that is not included in the regular packet.
Questions? Mr. Kim.
Well, it's a question to the group, because as I look at the attendance, over the past seven or eight years, the elementary program has tripled. The middle school has remained somewhat flat, and had about forty-something kids. And the high school has actually dropped in half over the same nine years. So we're, we're going way up in the elementary, we're in middle, and then we're losing population at the high school. And with increasing requirements of rigidity, I would have expected that we would increase at the high school, and so maybe there's an opportunity there. Curiously, at the middle school, there are zero people coming from out of town to the middle school. Yet, the high school's hundred and twenty-one consists of forty from out of town. So suddenly, they come to Vernon to go to the high school program, yet we're getting nobody from out of town going to the middle school. I don't know if you noticed that, but it just, the, the data just jumps out at you as why. Have we diminished any of the programs or courses at, at the middle or high school the past few years that would account for a drop-off in, in the population?
Well, I'm, I'm less able to speak about changes in quality, for obvious reasons over the last several years. I will tell you that the stat you picked out is one I had mentioned, which is the one that immediately jumped out at me. And while I could speculate as to causes, and I might, I think that might be due to the rigidity of a program, which, for example, I think time might be passing by. Cost is a factor, a hundred and fifty dollars, I think is a very, very definite factor that precludes some kids from taking that course, notwithstanding the fact that we have a free and reduced lunch eligibility and things like that. Nevertheless, I think that's a factor. I, I think that individual thing is what, when I looked at the report, that jumped out at me the most, that we have so few kids taking that. Of course, a corollary it might be, although it's not true here, we want fewer kids to fail courses and thus have to avail themselves at summer school, but that, that's not our case. So, I agree with you, that status is the major one that jumped out at us.
I think as far as out-of-town students for the middle school, the big difference is local areas, if you have students in high school who need to get a credit to move on, at high school, it's required that they do that. Middle schools in the area, it's similar to ours, the recommendations, they go to summer school. So, it depends on the year, but sometimes we get certain students from certain areas who, you know, I think the most we've had is, say, six, but normally it's two or three, where we'll contact it. It is expensive, again, the program is self-funded, but I think the big difference there is just, depending on the programs in this area, if you're a high school student and you need to find a certain class in order to get the credit to move to the next grade, and Rockville offers that, they're going to go there. It's not the case with the middle school. I think one of the things that Mr. DeVallis talked about, that we really want to build our program on is the enrichment classes, not just that the kids are failing, but how can we do a better job of offering things in the summer to prepare our kids for the high school? And so those are some of the things we can build on. I have teachers who are willing to do it, I think we can have programming, much like Mr. DeVallis. I think the key is to advertise it early and be aggressive with what we can offer. So that's an area where I think enrollment will go up, and I think it will go up for the right reasons.
Thank you. Other questions? I'm sorry.
The high school and middle school programs are self-funding.
Can you put your mic closer?
I'm sorry. High school and middle school are self-funding programs, elementary school is not. Do you know, um, do you know what it costs? I mean, transportation and special ed is, if it's in their IEP, then they attend, that no cost, correct? Do you know what the, what the summer school program costs at the elementary level?
It, it's a little bit difficult, but it comes from different accounts. The general summer academy, I want to say the budget was about twenty-three, twenty-four thousand dollars, but that doesn't include any paraprofessionals or the special ed staff. That also included the enrichment courses. Originally, when I, when we planned the enrichment courses, that was supposed to be self-funded, but due to the, the numbers, we, we wouldn't really be able to run any, anything except for one enrichment course. If we did it sheer just by numbers versus the teacher, but we were able to go into our account, and we came out still, you know, positive, and still offered the enrichment courses for the other students, even though we had, in some course cases, three students. But, yeah, my budget was about twenty-four thousand dollars.
Could I ask Mr. Picaro, maybe in some future, we could get a dollar amount cost? Thank you.
Other questions? Mr. Booton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Based upon what I have heard from the municipal and the middle school, I think the program is going well, that it's doing well, and I am confident that should we have to do this program again in the next summer, I think it will be in good hands again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and I'll turn this over to Mrs. Field.
Okay, good evening. Thank you for allowing us to present. The numbers speak for themselves, for my program as well. I've tried to present data, you know, kind of history of data, five years, in most cases, when we've offered programs for five years. This summer, again, we had a huge, wide range of services for students, a hundred and fifty-three students from preschool to post-high school. We had students from preschool all the way to the adults, you know, the eighteen to twenty-one-year-old program, programs in the, as, as you heard, we had some students that were included in the summer academy, as they are during the regular school year. We had some students in self-contained programs, and that's why you'll see the breakout of the different programs on this, on page two and page three. We also had some students included in the middle school program, and some self-contained students. As well as at the high school, we had a couple of different programs, self-contained programs, where they serve students who required that service to achieve educational benefit as part of their IEP. So that's the determining factor. I did try to include that terminology in the report so that you'd have an understanding of that. So each individual student's planning and placement team meeting, the team has a discussion of whether or not that student needs to continue to go to, attend school for the summer in order to achieve progress on their IEP. So as you can see, there were a variety of students, again, very creative planning, wide range of programs all over town, as well as some students out of district. I included those numbers as well. And I, you know, I just, I've said this before, and if you were at the table last year, which you won't were, you'll hear it again. You have incredible staff that work in the Vernon Public Schools, many teachers, parareducators, custodial staffs, secretaries, principals. This couldn't happen without the amazing people that you have working here. Sometimes we have teachers that are hired for summer academy that we now have the fortune of hiring onto staff, that have been with us for many years, sometimes as parareducators, sometimes as teachers, and then now we've hired them on as staff here. So it's a tribute, it's, I think, a really nice recruiting round for the Vernon Public Schools, for us to get to see some of these young teachers and, and young college students in school, and to support their learning, and then support us when we're ready to hire some of these people. So, you know, it's just kudos to, to the many people that come together to put these programs together across the district.
More members' questions? No, thank you. Thank you for the report.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Item five point two is a disciplinary order similar to...
Thank you very much. I can see Mr. DeVallis coming back to the table. As she's, he's representing Center Road School Administration. Mrs. Paglione, he developed the report that you have in your folders. I'll turn this over to Mr. DeVallis, I wonder if you have any highlights or...
I mean, for, for highlights for discipline, you know, it's hard, it's hard to highlight anything, you know. Obviously, it would, it'd be great if the ODR, the Office of Disciplinary Referrals would be zero each day, but, you know, overall, you did see a downward trend as the year progressed, which means, you know, PBIS and the interventions that we set forth for some of our more challenging students did work, where, you know, near the end, you know, April, May, and June, each one of those were significantly lower on the, the average per day than the rest of the year. So that overall shows that, you know, PBIS does work, and, you know, students are capable of definitely adjusting their behaviors with enough prompting, enough great teaching, and rewards. So, just like, another thing I would just like to talk about, like, you know, really what, what do we do with this data, and why does it matter? You know, if you look at the problem behaviors, we can see that, you know, defiance comes up as, as the number one reason for referrals, and it's also the number three. You see defiance, insubordination, noncompliance. The, the difference between those is like, the defiance, insubordination, and noncompliance, that's more of a major, whereas if they're just flat-out not listening, refusing after many prompts, where the defiance might just be something a little bit smaller, where a teacher still writes them up, we kept, that's how we just differentiate between the level of defiance. But, you know, looking at that, the PBIS TV's every month, just to look at this data, and then it kind of focuses how, what we need to focus on as staff with our students. So after reviewing data, we might say, send out an email to staff who are at a monthly meeting, to say, you know, we noticed that students are having a hard time respecting their peers. So maybe we'll do a mini lesson on how to treat each other during lunch, or during recess. You know, another thing that helps, we can tell by location where the problems happen. And obviously, you know, students spend most of the time in the classroom, so that's where the majority of office of disciplinary referrals are going to come from. But we also have a high amount from recess and lunch, of all places. You know, you think lunch, but it's true. So this year, we adjusted our recess procedures. We also gave teachers two duties a week instead of only one, and only teachers are outside on recess a week. We just felt it gives more consistency, the students see the teachers out there, and so far, and I know it's only been eight days in, but we haven't had one referral from recess yet. So, you know, that's just the type of thing, like, when the data's right out there in front of us, what we can do. Another great thing that individual grade levels are doing now, they're trying to be proactive with student behavior, and instead of just relying on the school system of, we call them roadrunner riches, where we give, you know, literally like dollar bills to students when they behave right, each grade level has incentive programs now for, across the grade level. Third grade started it last year, and now a few other grades, I think fourth and fifth, adopted it. But basically, you have a whole week, and then every Friday for a half an hour, it's a half an hour after recess of lunch, they call it free time Friday. And the students that continued all their homework, behaved, excellent, you know, did all their work in class, they had some free time, and the students that didn't make it, there was a classroom, or sometimes even two classrooms, where those students had to be re-taught, they had to make up their homework. And it really sent a message in to the students that, like, you know, but I'm, I'm looking across the hall, and I'm seeing my friends having fun, I need to get my act together. And for our third grade teachers, they noticed a significant improvement in the students within a week or two. So, you know, they shared that with the staff at the end of last year, and then were adopting it this year. So, we feel like we're headed in the right direction for behavior, and hopefully, the number of leaving were down less. Questions?
More members' questions? Mr. Kim.
On the last page, it's a very revealing display that you have on the, on the third one. It says forty-nine students had one referral.
Right.
And then you took it all the way through to the max. At the end of the day, of all of the referrals you had, two-thirds of them were five kids.
Yeah, and that's...
Five, right. So we're spending all of this time and effort and frustration and, and class interruption and difficulty handling the classroom management, and all of that, five kids. I'm sure it's the same at every middle school in the country, but maybe we need to engage five sets of parents, or whatever parents are present, and bring their feet to the fire, as to how come two-thirds of all of this time and effort and grief and aggravation is your little darling?
Right.
So, I, I, I don't know what exactly you want to do, but this is, this is beyond the individual child. You've had parents very much not doing what they want to do. To have one kid have thirty-five referrals, that's a lot.
That's an extremely high number. And, you know, when looking at those numbers, some of those students, we do have a behavior program at Center Road School. Now, the way we did it for those students, if they were in their self-contained classroom and they had their behaviors, we didn't report it on this. But there were some students that, I think, are top two, were students that were in the general level by the end of the year, you know, based on parent meetings, based on just their lateral progress, they did actually transition into our behavior program. So we do have an eye on those students. But it is incredible how, you know, it is only five students, but the impact that, that those five students could have, if they're in five different classes, and the impact that they could have on the students, is probably about a hundred students that they can impact on a daily basis with their disruptions in, in the classroom. So, although it is a small number, you know, it is definitely those students that we do have to target. And, you know, every student that had, I want to say three, every student that had more than three referrals were on some type of check-in, check-out system that we've devised with the school library, where they have point sheets. So we are, you know, really trying to address those students that have multiple office referrals. And in all cases, especially those students that have, you know, a significant amount, we do get the parents involved as much as we can. We invite them to a meeting, we invite them into, you know, with the teachers, with the student, and really discuss about what the behavior we're seeing, and how you can help as a team to try to curb it.
Well, that, that's a referral every four days for this one kid. I mean, I don't know what kind of program that child might be on, but obviously, more needs to happen. I don't know whether it's bringing the parents in or what, but that, one could, could jump to the conclusion that that, that particular child is just disrupting the classroom all day long, every day, because not all of the occasions where he's being disrupted, is there a referral in. And so you have the constant behavior problem, constant, you know, every single class that they go to. And so if the problem really is focused down to five kids, maybe we need to do something to get them out of there. I don't know.
Well, with those students, once they were in the program, those numbers significantly decreased. And the, the opportunities for them to disrupt the learning of a whole class pretty much ended, because they, they had different supports in place. And some of those, I mean, some of those maybe had three office referrals in a day if they had a bad day. You know, we, we, the rates they came... You know, we, we, the rates that came back and they had, in a different area, they had another problem, you know? So it's not like, these students had good days too, and it wasn't like every day they just came in and once we put them in the right program and gave them the right fit, they did have much more success.
Okay. Any other questions? Mr. DeValles.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. DeValles.
Item five point three, goals in alignment to the Board of Education goal number two.
Yes, thank you. You have another sheet that looks very similar to the one in your board packet in your blue folder that is a little more detailed. The, there's a new teacher evaluation model and administration evaluation model in the state of Connecticut that you have approved, the seed model, which we're following. The only certified person in the entire district that does not affect is the superintendent. And certainly, we tried to model everything as we're working. So the page that was in your packet was modeling goals after the administrator model, which are SMART goals. You give a timeframe, which is this year, you give how you're going to measure it, what percent is going to move, how they're going to move, is the growth model or not. The teacher evaluation has very broad goals. They might say increase reading across grade two or grade three. And then they have something called IEGDs, indicators of academic growth and development, and that's where they put the SMART part of their goals. They say that in my second grade classroom, I am going to move all of my children at least twenty percent, looking at the strengths and challenges of their children, their individual children, which might be different from the second grade classroom right next door. And so that's what I was trying to do in the paper that I gave you there. The teachers must align their student learning objectives to the administrators' student learning objectives. And so certainly, since all of these are aligned to the school improvement plan and the district improvement plan, it made sense that the superintendent chose some goals that would align with everything else. And so I give these to you to review. The goals from the first page to the second that I gave you are just written slightly differently with specific indicators. I did change, the third goal was an Algebra I goal that is contained within the third objective there and so you can see. So the overall student learning objective, and this is all for board goal number two, is that students in grades K one, two, and three will be reading at or above grade level. And so I'm looking at a growth model right now. We don't have all of the fall data in from where all of our students are, so I'm looking at that at least fifteen percent of the students will show, that at least, that all students will show a fifteen percent growth from wherever they are to, as measured by Fantas and Penel. Students in grades three through twelve, we're looking at writing across the board. I've told you several times, our writing scores are horrendous. And so we're looking, we've created rubrics for grades six through twelve and for grades K through five. And so based on those rubrics, we need to set baseline data this fall and then we are setting a goal of eighty-five percent. And that could, you know, you could certainly say that was just pulled out of a hat, the eighty-five percent, because I don't know the baseline data yet and certainly I may be coming back, just as our teachers can come back and our administrators can come back mid-year and say, you know what, this is what really happened, this is where I am, I'm going to revise our goals. If we find that we're already at eighty percent, then I certainly would change the goal to ninety percent to try to get that to move. And so I chose eighty-five percent. And then the students being college and career-ready upon graduation, that's the vision for Burn Public Schools. And so I used four different indicators there. One was the number of opportunities for students to, or students engaging in opportunities, excuse me, to gain college credit. So that doesn't mean they passed the AP class or the ECE class, but that means at least that they took it. And that's a step in the right direction. Certainly, that's not the ending objective, but that's one we need to start at. The Algebra I completion rate from this past year, which I don't have that data yet, looking for that to increase the number of students by fifteen percent. And then job shadow experiences, we have a wonderful program, but when you look at the actual percent of students who engage in job shadows, it is not exceptionally high. And then English eleven, that's not two, that's an eleven. So I'm looking at the number of students successfully completing English eleven, being ready for twelfth grade. So I tried to hit several areas there and I certainly would be able to answer questions. I did share this with all of the administrators and they indicated that the goals that they are in process of setting, since we haven't met yet, are in complete alignment with these, especially the writing. That's where most everybody was documenting and reading. I would share that with you and I am looking for approval on those this evening. It's not necessary, but I think it would be very appropriate for the board to approve those goals. And so those would be the goals that I am setting for me.
Discussion questions. Ms. Fisher.
I just want to ask, was there a reason why you kept Algebra I and Algebra eleven in particular?
Algebra I because we're just starting with the mathematics. The data out there, the research shows that students who have taken and passed Algebra II find success in college. And so in two years, that's probably where you're going to see the goal, but right now we need, the Algebra I is heterogeneously grouped and I think that our teachers in mathematics need to truly get that message that we need to do whatever it takes to make sure that those children are learning and passing and do that both in eighth grade and in ninth grade. So I want to put a focus on the Algebra I right now, but we would, we certainly would be moving up from there as well. Was the other question the English eleven? English eleven, I know that Mr. Rocket actually has a focus on English nine right now and my feeling is we needed to really look across the board. Indicators that I had spoken with Mr. Bane about last year would be biology, which is sophomore class, US history, which is a junior class, English twelve, and Algebra I, which is a freshman class. So we talked about those kinds of things. Mr. Rocket is brand new, so we haven't had those conversations yet, so I, this is where I was going for that. But I think we need to focus, it's not just all about grade nine, it really is what can we do for students all the way through their four years.
But it's not because our grade eleven students are having trouble...
No, no, no.
Ms. Stone.
I might need a little further explanation, that if you don't have data back yet, Dr. Conway...
That's correct. That's why this is a growth model.
I understand, but then attaching a fifteen percent goal might be overshooting and undershooting in some cases.
Right, and when I get that data, I will be bringing it back to you, just as the teachers have an opportunity when they are, they're first setting their SLOs, looking at their paper data early in the fall, and then as they meet their students and they find out about their students, then they can reset those goals. So I would bring that data back to you at that point.
When would you expect, when would you expect to have the information to perhaps make adjustments?
Well, as soon as I can get it. Just we don't have it all at this point.
Well, I'm wondering why we want to do this without that information? Maybe you, maybe we would have more accurate goals if it was based on the information? So rather than coming back and revising it, that maybe we should, is there a reason that this needs to be done now?
Yes, yes, actually, there is. The schools and the building principals and the teachers need the context. They have to align their goals with the teachers, with the principals, the principals with the superintendents. And so while the numbers may not be perfect yet, it sets the direction. And so that's why I did this fairly quickly, not in isolation certainly, but fairly quickly to say that, you know what, rather than doing this at the principals, just basing it on the board's three goals, they're supposed to be student learning objectives, so they're truly, or goal number two, what they should be aligning with. So that is why I brought this before you now, is so that they would know, okay, oh, writing is very important, Algebra I is very important, reading by grade three is very important.
Mr. Kennedy.
When you accumulate the data and come up with your final tallies, is that at the end of the regular school year or do those totals include any results that have been achieved through the summer programs that we just heard about?
It would be through the end of the regular school year, so I'd be able to report out on this at the end of June, but certainly we can amend that over the course of the summer as well, because those people, those students are still part of the previous class. So seniors that make up credits in the summer are actually part of the class of whatever just graduated.
Well, since we're trying to accomplish results, I don't mind if we were to allow the results from summer school to be part of the total. In fact, if the cost of it, which I heard about a few moments ago, might be inhibiting some kids to go, I would suggest maybe the board needs to consider lowering the cost of going to summer school so that it incites them to be in the building and take advantage of those programs. And that might also be one way to see the numbers of kids taking those programs skyrocket if the totals were part of your collective evaluations. We don't have to stop it at the end of the regular school year. It gets done, it gets done.
Thank you. Ms. Stone.
In my non-teacher head, it seems to me that fifteen percent improvement isn't very aggressive. Is that...
Actually, fifteen percent is extremely aggressive.
It is.
Yes, and we had this conversation last Friday at our senior leadership team meeting with a professor from Central Connecticut and the talk around the table was, well, ten percent, and it kept going, and it's fifteen, sorry, fifteen is, you know, it's pretty high, but, you know, attainable if you work hard. So it's fifteen percent of the number of students.
Other discussion or questions? And there is a proposed motion for being able to approve the goals. Ms. Fisher.
I moved that the Board of Education approved the three goals aligned to Board of Education goal number two, increase the achievement of every student through high-quality curriculum instruction and assessment as presented.
Ms. Bush.
I second that.
The motion is seconded. Is there a discussion on the motion? Seeing no discussion, I'm going to call the motion to a vote by showing hands, all in favor. And those opposed, I shall want to oppose, the motion is secured. Thank you. Before we take any more on this in the future, I'm sure. Item five point four is the update on the school governance council.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hill. School governance councils will be beginning in all seven of our schools, all, I'm not sure if we're going to be able to burn in elementary school this year as it's so small, but we have one at Northeast School. It is just about two years old and Mrs. Green is here and it appears to me that she's brought members of her team, so we're very pleased that they'll be able to answer some questions and share some of their data. Just to give you the bird's eye view, the purpose of school governance teams is truly to provide another opportunity for collaboration with parents in the community and the schools for the purpose of increasing student achievement and that collaboration will do that. Membership, there are voting members, it would be seven parents, five teachers, two community leaders who are chosen from the, would buy the five teachers and seven parents. And then there's non-voting members and the non-voting members include the principal and if possible, two students. So certainly at our high school and possibly our middle school, we have two students on that team. Their responsibility is generally to serve in an advisory capacity, excuse me. They're looking at student achievement data as it relates to the school improvement plan and they may also give input into the development of that improvement plan. They review the building budget, give advice to the principal, participate in hiring the principal, and assist the principal in both making program and operational decisions and changes and may advise on some other major program matters. They develop the parent involvement policy and may work on the survey, and I think you'll hear about that from the Northeast School's school governance team, that's one thing they did. And also the development of the school compacts. All of our schools do have school compacts and last year, I know that Northeast Schools was redesigned and many of the other schools looked at theirs again and updated it, but that, I'm sure that's going to be on the agenda for the school governance team. The only other item is training. We are required on behalf of the board to provide training for all the school governance councils. We have an administrative council meeting on Wednesday afternoon and that's going to be a big discussion of ours. I'm hoping that Mrs. Green is going to be bringing advice to that body to determine what it will look like. Will we try to get seven groups in a room from seven schools? That's probably not going to work with everybody's schedules. And so we may be looking at the webinars that are offered by the CEA, by CAPS, by the State Department, and by CADE. Or we may be looking at making sure that we can visit each one to provide training. And there are very specific rules on how people get elected and all that, I'm not going to allude to that for this conversation right now. But you can see at the end of the packet that you received, Northeast School had a, several pages of information from their school governance team. And Mrs. Green, would you like to bring your team up to speak or answer questions? Are they going up without you? They're taking their...
No.
They're going to shout from there.
They're still...
So you do have those pages in the back, the Northeast School Governance Committee. The one that I thought was quite amazing was, if you recall, when we looked at the participation in the surveys at the end of the school year, it had risen significantly. And certainly, when you're going from very few to still not the majority of the entire school, but you have raised it by over three hundred percent, that's human's work. And so, Mrs. Green, please introduce you.
Hi, I'm Mrs. Green, the principal of Northeast Elementary School. I'm just a parent.
I'm really enjoying your parent, a first grader.
And we had a really successful year last year on the school governance council and the packet basically explains some of the highlights that we have. We are, this year, our project from the end of the year was to plan this open house for the school year, so that's something we're looking forward to, which is on the eighteenth of September. Parents and school governance council members got together and decided they'd like to do something a little creative, to try to meet the needs of the community and to get more parents to be able to come to an open house and make it informative and accommodating for everyone. So that's in the packet, but I'd be happy to answer any question and Mr. Oger can certainly answer most of them. So if you have any questions about the school governance council.
Mr. Christie.
Was your committee full with your seven parents, five teachers, and two community leaders?
Yes, you know, it was. We had, one of the challenges of the school governance council is to have people meet and it's very hard. We have a lot of working parents and it's very hard to get a common date where everybody can meet and that is the most challenging. I can get teachers and I'm there, but it's hard for parents to come because of the constraints. But what we do to accommodate that is at the end of every meeting, the first meeting, we all got together, we had a common date and did that, and then at the end of the meeting, we would plan another meeting, everybody gets a calendar out and we all would just look. So that's how we tried to accommodate and we had better attendance that way. Also, this year with the ballots for the election, because we have some seats to fill, we also did, actually, we just have two to fill in the election, there are dates on the ballot so people can choose, you know, what dates that they will be available, so I can already start looking at that and... start looking at that and try to come up with a common date.
My other question is, who are your community leaders?
Right now, we have Brian Flint and also Robert Chaplin from the community.
Thank you. Other questions? Mr. Kennedy.
If the date of the implementation of this particular committee is known, could someone share it?
I'm sure I understand.
When did this particular governance council formally begin?
How long ago did it begin?
November first, two thousand and eleven.
Okay. Statute requires the consideration of reconstitution after three years, so it's not till a year from now. Are there any thoughts of considering anything such as that?
We haven't gotten to that level or taken it to that level. Northeast made some significant improvements in academics this year. We have a strong school governance council, so really, that hasn't been a discussion at this point.
Okay, thank you. And another question, have you established some bylaws that we could take a look at?
Yes, we do have bylaws, and I'll certainly forward that to superintendent. We have a... Oh, my members seem, received a notebook with all the school data and all the, and we created the bylaws and edited and approved them during the meeting, so we do have a set. We're happy to leave before we have to.
All right, thank you.
Other questions or comments? Ms. Fisher.
I just wanted to comment on the open house format. I think it looks great, and I wish you would share that with some of the other elementary schools.
Thank you.
I had a lot of kids in school, it was tough getting all the teachers' classrooms.
We were trying to make it so if you have multiple children in different grades, you can actually go to the different teachers to actually learn from them. And I also have a high school, and one of the things that I liked about the middle school and high school is you switch and you go to the classes and you get to meet the different teachers and you, you know, and you don't have the kids with you. It's really hard to do an open house. As a parent, it's hard to get information from the teacher on what we're supposed to get out of them and what they want from us for the year with children running around the classroom. So that was why, and on top of it, I figured bringing the high school kids in to help out, that would help with their community service and get the high schoolers to be able to interact a little bit better with that elementary school kids. So I'm hoping that it's successful.
If you could share it with the other elementary schools, I think would be great too.
Ms. Sarn.
Do you have minutes, Mrs. Drujic?
Minutes from the governance council? I do not have minutes in here.
Oh, we do have minutes.
We have minutes, but I don't have any.
We try to post them on the website after every meeting. And we have them all, I try to.
Are they still out on the website?
They are. I know the website, I had to check and see how updated it is, but we try to post them right after. Actually, Miss Merrill happened to be on our governance council last year, and she was very good at taking the minutes and getting them out.
Thank you. Mr. Kennedy.
I'd like to ask the superintendent what is anticipated in the area of governance councils within the district in the short term.
All seven schools will be up and running with their elections by November first and their first meeting by December first this fall. So they may look a little different in each school, their work may be a little different. So it's really got to fit the school. And I think the Northeast School Council has certainly, and they're still growing, but I think that they're going, looking at student data, and the parent participation was huge this year, absolutely huge, and you saw that turn around quite a bit at Northeast School over the past year. So it's expected that all seven schools will have them up and running, elected members by November first and their first meeting by December first this year.
Is that required or voluntary on any of their parts?
It is required for four of the other schools. It was required for Northeast School based on their two thousand and eight mastery test scores. It is not required of Skinner Road and Lake Street. It is required of the other four schools.
But they voluntarily will implement in an event?
I don't know if they would think it's voluntary.
Okay.
All for one and one for all.
I see. Okay, we won't tell them.
Any other questions? Thank you for the information, and good luck with the open house format. I really think that does look promising.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Green. Thank you, Mr. Drujic.
Agenda item five point five is the Board of Education Technology Committee Report.
Thank you. Yes, and it has Mr. Bhutar was there, Mrs. Goldich was not here. You were there, Mr. Hill, thank you very much. And so you can speak to it if you wish. The Board's Technology Committee met with the Technology Council of the town. The minutes are in your consent agenda, so I won't go over those. The purpose was truly to present an update for the Technology Committee. This is, it's still a work in progress. The work is getting more fine-tuned. There are now policies on how to make decisions and procedures, and there's a standard computer list, our equipment list. So they've come, the committee and the Vernon Data Processing Center have come quite far, the council and the VDPC. The fiber is going to, we have three schools left, right, three schools left, Skinner, Lake, and Northeast. And Northeast should be done this year, and hopefully Skinner by the end of this school year. So, and we're completing the fiber ring around the town. I would say this, the technology in the town of Vernon is probably at the top in the state in terms of the services that can be provided. So they're all up and running in terms of staffing, finally, full staff, and they were deployed to the schools at the beginning of the year. Do you want to add anything else, Mr. Bhutar, Mr. Hill?
The only thing I would add is you say that we are, state of the art backbone, our delivery system is state of the art. One of the places that we were made aware of that we still have to work on is the actual technology that we're using on this backbone, and that is, you know, we have a lot of aged computers, some, a good number that are over ten years. And so that's one of the things that they didn't speak to us about. I don't know if anybody else has anything else to add. Seeing none? Thank you.
Item five point six, which is the Organization Finance Committee Report.
And thank you. I will turn this over to Mr. Recaro, who's going to give us the clip notes. Mr. Recaro, thank you.
Through the chair, if I could call your attention to the Business and Finance Report, the two oh one page, two-sided agenda, and the exhibit packet that goes with it, which will be the clip notes version of the report that was given in more detail at the Finance Committee before tonight's board meeting. We'd be glad as a follow-up to drill down in any level of details the board wishes on any item. We'll start with the fiscal year 2014 budget update. Executive summary. So Exhibit A is a format that we've been working on for a couple of months now, and looking at trying to present all of our accounts and account balances to date in one document. So this is truly a very transparent way of sharing with the public, with the board, all of our account information up to date. And just to briefly go through it, starting with the local budget, excuse me, that's the bottom line in our year-to-date budget before, which is included as Exhibit B. Listed underneath that are all of the grants with the available budget. You will notice that there are somewhat significant negative balances. That's because some of the grant budgets, we have made encumbrances on some of them with the expectation that we would be receiving funding. As an example, our Lyons District funding showing a negative balance of four hundred and thirty-four thousand because we have an encumbrance of a little over a million. But it's only reflecting our initial installment of six hundred and seventy-one thousand nine hundred and eleven dollars so far. And as you know, we are expecting an additional seven hundred and thirty-one thousand change appropriation once we expend that initial installment from the state. On the back page of this summary page are the state funding sources, our access costs, education cost share, and BoI grant. Again, they're showing zeros because we don't receive these funds until later in the fiscal year, but we will continue to track them. So there's revenue projections, and you'll see that as a follow-up underneath that in revenue that we've discussed in other formats, but for the purposes of this form, it's only showing those funds that we've actually received. So to date, under revenue, there's thirteen thousand received from Medicaid. And then underneath that, we've talked about this in our Finance Committee, one area that I've been spending some time on and will continue to spend some time on this fiscal year, is looking at our student activity accounts and some of the process of use with those. So I thought it would be prudent to share all of that information as well. So before you, presented before you is a transparent and very detailed, I think, presentation of all of our accounts that I'd like to continue using as the top exhibit as we move forward throughout this fiscal year. And I think that will become a useful tool, especially through the budget planning months ahead. The next exhibit is our year-to-date report. We are in a healthy black line at this point, even though we're still under a spending freeze, and that will continue. There are certain expenditures that we are tracking, especially under special education. One thing I will point out is we're still going through the encumbrance process of our payroll accounts and salary accounts, and we are recoding some of that. While you'll see a two hundred thousand dollar positive balance in special ed, some of that will be redistributed as we correctly fund, with the correct funding string, some of our teachers in the non-special ed salary accounts, as an example. We also discussed briefly in the Finance Committee meeting, the town of Vernon revenue estimates and how we are currently tracking. And we had some discussion about some of the accounts, we're bringing additional funding, some of the accounts, we're coming short with the town's revenue estimates, and assuming we have access to all the funding that we're projecting, bringing in, it's close to being in that zero, but we did have some discussion about that as well. I'd like to spend a few minutes talking about the proposed budget transfers and amendments that are before you, that is, under Exhibit G in your packet. The first one is a budget amendment request. So by way of quick background recap from the last board meeting, we had discussed implementing, reinstituting board policy. That would be putting us in compliance with the Public Act thirteen dash sixty and town procedures. And so before you is our first budget, formal budget amendment, excuse me, our second, but first formal budget amendment request using this process. The first one was done previously to transfer four hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars and change to support the startup costs for the Vernon Elementary School. The one before you tonight, that would be requesting board approval, is a transfer requested by Mr. Testa. It's a transfer between locations, this makes it a major budget amendment request, and so it's before the board for action. And the request is to transfer seventeen hundred and eighty dollars and fifty-seven cents from science textbooks, as well as two hundred and fifty-one dollars and forty-three cents from other science supplies and materials from central administration to Rockville High School for the purchase of a safety hood. This is a critical purchase, it's for student and staff safety, and so I recommend that the board takes positive action on this. Just so you have the full picture of the accounts in which the funds are being requested from and to, if you notice on the paragraph above the signature line, the balance in account for which funds are requested is the amount of funding in the to account, so that's in the Rockville High School, science and instructional supplies currently has a balance of six thousand one hundred and forty-four dollars and sixty-eight cents. We are transferring additional funds in there, so that would be, because these funds have already been spoken for and budgeted for other purposes. And then the next three, the original appropriation in account, the actual encumbrances and expenditures to date against that account, and the amount available referred to the from account. So I thought that's important information for the board to know as you continue to review these as we move forward. So I know tonight you didn't have as much time to look at this, and moving forward, we will be including all of the Finance Committee information in the Wednesday packet, so you'll have more time to look at it. But I would ask through the chair if it would be appropriate to move this one forward because it does involve a safety concern for staff and students.
Yeah, I was going to suggest that we review all four of them and then take them as a single item to approve this evening unless there's any objection and anybody wishes to divide at that time.
Mr. Percy.
There's transfer between locations and transfer within a location. The board only has to approve the transfer between locations? The other three are under the purview of, so we just need to approve the first one?
Okay. I stand corrected, but I just think that we had to do them all. Mr. Percy.
I'm going to make a motion to approve the transfer that I submitted.
Mr. Percy. I have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, by showing hands. That's unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Recaro.
Thank you.
I appreciate the update. I'd just like to understand, from your perspective, are there any pieces of this that you're concerned about similar to the issues we had to deal with last year in the area of special ed and magnet tuition? Or are these more on track, in your opinion, this time around?
Through the chair, we had discussed that at the last board meeting, the projections still remain, and that's why the freeze still remains in effect. We do have, I do have concerns regarding our projected expenditures and potential shortage, especially in the area of special ed. Not so much in magnet school tuition. That number was significantly less of an issue than we had originally thought, and there may be various reasons that will be shared at a later date as to why that's the case, but the bottom line is not as many students were taking advantage of the open seats available for magnet school tuition, so that had a lower expenditure exposure for us. But I am still concerned about the special ed costs. As a result of that, we will continue with the spending and hiring freeze.
Thank you.
The next transfer is, just to review very briefly with the board, again, as the chair indicated and Mr. Percy had indicated, these are transfers within locations, minor transfers. Moving forward, only if requested by the board, we'll go into detail, but I think for tonight, just to briefly touch on them so you can understand the rationale as to why I've approved these and the original request. The first one is by Mr. Testa as well, is to transfer six thousand dollars from a math curriculum development account within central administration to a science curriculum development account. And the rationale behind this is originally in the Vernon Center Middle School budget, there was, in the white pages, it's still in our approved budget, the intent was to move six thousand dollars from the middle school to the central administration budget, consistent with the vision to centralize these accounts and put them under the control management of our coordinators. That did not occur through the budgetary process to make up for that and to meet a short-term critical need. The request was made to move funds from the math curriculum development to the science curriculum development to purchase this year's science kits. So as we move on, and we'll see how our budget experience is throughout the year, that's a, in my opinion, a significant amount of money to move. We'll look to see if there's additional funds as Mr. Testa feels necessary, and if requested, we could look to make potential another transfer or an amendment to make up for that at a point later on down the road, but this was a short-term priority identified by Mr. Testa. The next one was a correction to an account. We have now, as you know, executed an agreement with the town for us to have services provided to Department of Public Works primarily through a contract from Mr. Bob Kleinsch. That is a contracted service, not a salary account, where we should be drawing on those funds, and as such, the next transfer that I approved was to move thirty thousand dollars from a non-certified salary account to the appropriate account, which is other professional and technical services, and that's where our payments to the invoices submitted by the town will be made. The next one is to move forty-seven hundred dollars and eighty-seven, forty-seven hundred and eighty-seven dollars and twenty cents from our contingency account to other professional and technical services within central administration, so as to pay for temporary salaries as a result of our payroll supervisor being on maternity leave. And the last one is to transfer twenty-four thousand five hundred and forty-five dollars and eighty cents from our prescription drug account to our liability insurance account, to account for the total in our premium cost for liability insurance that when we were budgeting, we were projecting an amount that was twenty-four thousand dollars less than what it actually came in, and that was based on the insurance provider's recommendations at the time, but based on not our experience, but the way it was explained, the experience of municipalities in general. of municipalities in general, that meant everyone's rates went up. Ours, our experience, no, was not that bad, but the bigger picture has driven the rates way up, and as a result, we have to make up for those funds, so we can't pay that bill unless we transfer the funds in following our new process. Moving forward very briefly, Exhibit H is our new overtime time-in-attendance system with a schedule of when all the employee groups by date will be switching fully over to the new system. We are currently using it for custodians, maintainers, secretaries, and cafeterias for time-in-attendance, but we'll be including all their accruals starting September 20th. Bottom line here is by November 1st, all of our employees will be using the time-in-attendance system, including the accruals. I'd just like to spend one minute on the proposed FICA alternative retirement plan. Again, this is something we've been looking at for a couple of months now, researching. This is concept-only, other municipalities and other school districts are looking at this and have implemented it successfully, so I thought it was worthwhile to at least raise it as a possibility, one that I support and like to share with the Board for further discussion and potential action at a later meeting. Essentially, the town of Vernon Board of Education qualifies not to pay its half of the FICA taxes under a Section 218 agreement, which is allowable under the Internal Revenue Code. A copy of that agreement is included in your packet by way of background, and they actually refer to it as the, back in 1952, we found a copy of it online and were able to download it, an old age and survivor's insurance system, which is the old terminology for social security, and that gives us a special exemption for part-time, summer, and seasonal employees for us to not have to pay our 6.2% of the 12.4% total of social security tax. What it means from an employee standpoint, however, is if employees are not contributing to social security, they are required to contribute to a mandatory FICA alternative retirement plan. And that is something that's portable, it's an annuity, they can take it with them, they can cash it out, but it only, it only pertains to certain employees, and that's included in your packet for review. So conceptually, it's something I'm very interested in, exploring more with the Board and with the Superintendent's support, we have a potential to save by not having to contribute our 6.2%, somewhere in the realm of about $50,000, based on who we believe qualifies under part-time, seasonal, or temporary employees, so I think there's some worthwhile efforts there, and I did share with the town, and they are also interested in pursuing it, some more information to follow up a future meeting about that, but there's quite a bit of backward information for you there. Very briefly, student transportation, we received our annual fuel credit, the amount of $23,676.00 to change. We also took advantage of a prepayment program with, for a student that yielded $3,200.00 and change for us. We also received a $5,000 credit after we had some concerns with the new Versitrans electronic routing system. While the first student bus company has delivered on the system for us, under the contract it was a requirement, we felt it could be done better, it should have been done better, and it will be done better, so we're holding them accountable, and as a result, they provided us with a $5,000 credit, and they will be sending us a team in October to put more data in the system, and hopefully that will continue to refine and make our routes more efficient. Also included in here is a summary of the school bus violation statistics that we've implemented with resulting fines according to the contract, and also what has been reported to the police department utilizing a system that we put in place as an alternative to the bus cameras. And the bottom line there is six affidavits have been submitted by the bus company. Again, we felt that this could be done better, and we'll be following up with the bus company and the police department accordingly on how to increase participation and raise more awareness for student safety. Very briefly, we have implemented our new inventory control system, it's a WASP, it's the name of the system, inventory system. This will save us some funding towards the end of the fiscal year when we traditionally would have to hire our company to come in and do that work for us. It also will allow us to better manage and control our assets. Next in your handout is the legislation that recently passed Senate Bill 929 on roof pitches. There's other legislation included in here, but the takeaway message for us is that we now do not have to comply as we begin looking at in the next year or two replacements of at least three of our school roofs, the requirement of a half an inch per foot increase incline in the roof pitches. So that has significant financial impact on us if we had to comply somewhere in the ballpark of hundreds of thousands, if not tipping a million dollars in additional expenditures for us. And very briefly, under Food and Nutrition Services, you'll see the free and reduced program enrollment through the end of last fiscal year. I think it's time to take a look at this data and put it into additional perspective, and for the next meeting, we'll have a different, we'll have this data set and be able to compare and put it in context to what students are actually participating versus just enrolled in the program, and I think you'll find that of interest. Along the same lines, our food service, our food concession trailer has arrived, and will be unveiled at Friday's opening football game, along with the Ram Burger, which was designed by our high school students in Lori Gilmore's class, which have Chris. There's information in there about the food service trailer and the press release that was sent out jointly by Rockville Bank Foundation and schools. And then last is a request for proposal that we're currently in the middle of working with the town, as previously discussed, for copiers, printers, fax, and related services. This closes on September 13th, and our goal here, again, is to move towards vacuumed centers and reducing our costs for total equipment as well as consumables.
Thank you. Board members, questions? You've got this package of information, and if you have any questions after tonight, please email to Dr. Conway and she'll forward it on as appropriate to Mr. Caro to answer. There's a lot of information, thank you for the privileged version. There are no further questions, we'll move on to the final, not the final segment, review and update the Board of Education calendar, does anybody have any updates for the calendar? Mr. Kent?
I can't see November, so I'm just wondering if the CAVE Annual Convention is on our calendar? It's, we're close to it, and it's around the 15th, I think, two or three days, and mystic. I'm not their salesman, but I just think that if we're going to go, we should start to plan on it. I don't know when their early enrollment cost savings date cutoff is.
Yeah, I believe Ms. Buchanan sent out information to Board members regarding this. I'm not sure if she's got any information to the prospective candidates that could be Board members at the time that the convention actually takes place, and we'll talk about that. So there is information out there, there, she did actually poll to see who was going to be in attendance or any of that. Yes, sorry.
Was difficult to respond to that, those of us who don't know if we'll be here or not, so how do you want, how do you handle that? Do you reserve a space for just an individual?
Correct, yeah, reserve your space if you plan on attending pending the outcome, if you decide to do something different. Yeah, we should definitely.
I will email everybody again tomorrow and mail updates, so go forward.
Thank you, yeah.
And regarding, that somewhere along the calendar is a opportunity for prospective Board members to attend a seminar that's run by state, and I was disappointed to find out that we would not fund that, that that would have to be funded by the respective person, but I think that, I mean, that could open up to a million people that want to go. But once a party has formally endorsed someone to be on the ticket, and now we're down to a couple of people that may not be on the Board at the time, I think it might be worthwhile for us to consider funding such a thing, because when a new Board member joins this committee, it seems to take them months, if not a year or two, just to get with the program and understand how you do things. And if CAVE is going to lay it all out for them ahead of time, it might make it a lot easier on them and the Board if they took advantage of it.
We'll take that into consideration, Mr. Kent. Now, are there any other items for the calendar? Sina, move on to the last item, which is opportunity for press, because we have a press session. And one final question, Mr. Bhutar.
I have a question. At the Congress, we had the sheet reflecting the strength of the floor. This is the... Yep.
Which stat do you wish to...
This is the vibration, 3321. Is it going down or up or down?
True, here, Mr. Holt. Our population has actually decreased in some areas and increased in others. When you look at the high school, at the same time last year, the high school had 60 more students than they do right now. When you look at the middle school, the middle school had about 45 more students than they do right now. However, looking at the elementary schools, Center Road is up by 10, Lake is down by 20, and that has been what's been happening recently. Maple is about the same, Northeast is up by about 15, and Skinner Road is down by about 40. So they're up and down and up and down. Over, last year, our total was, let's see, I don't have that. We had about 140 more students last year at this time than we did. That was, yeah, that's opening day, so.
Thank you.
Mr. Kent, we're not going to drag this out real long, we need to make it in tonight, we can't. Go ahead.
One question if I can, the 48 out of district, are they included in the 3,300 total?
No, they're not.
Our motion, Mr., Ms. Fisher, go ahead.
I'm making a motion to the chair.
Mr. Percy.
Sorry.
There we go. It's not a bit of a motion, all in favor? Thank you.